Can I introduce the officers who are with us tonight? If somebody could put on... Thank you, Steve, you're head of the game here. So that's Barry Devlin from the Legal Department rushing in at the last minute, Steve Weaver, who was first on my list, who is the interim Head of Development Control, Louise Yandell, who is our area team leader for Southern and Western, Kayleigh Taylor and Rebecca Clark, who are presenting the reports this evening, and Victoria Chulartan from the Enforcement Team, who's here in case there's any queries on that aspect. So if everyone is content, let's move on to the business of the meeting. The minutes of the last meeting have been laid out for half an hour. Do you all wish that I sign them at the end of this meeting? Any apologies for absence?
Yes, we have apologies from councillors Stephen Mulliner and David Round.
Thank you very much. And any declarations before the meeting, Emma?
None before the meeting, but I believe Hazelmere Town Councillors declare a non-bocunary interest.
Everyone quite happy with that? No other interests to declare at this point. Any questions from members of the public, Emma?
None received, Chair.
Moving on then to item five. Any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation? Steve, are there any updates we should know about?
Nothing to report at this meeting, Chairman.
Racing through then on to item six, and I know you will want to talk to us about this. This is the update on our planning performance. So, Steve, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. If I can take you to page five of your order papers. There you'll see a table setting out Waverley's performance in respect of a number of performance indicators that have been introduced by the government as a measure of how satisfactorily authorities are determining planning applications, both in terms of speed of performance and also quality. And by quality, we mean how many decisions are being overturned at appeal. The current assessment period that we're looking at ran from the 1st of October 2015 to the 30th of September 2017. And you'll see the upper table deals with speed. The government has set a performance target of a minimum of 60% for major applications determined on time. And you'll see here that Waverley is performing extremely well, getting on for 98% of its applications were determined on time. Non-majors, the government's target there is higher, it's 70% or more. But again, excellent performance by the team. Again, 97, 97.5% of decisions being made on time. So all looking very good, and that's putting us in the upper echelons nationally. Turning to the performance on quality, this is a slightly less straightforward one to explain. Effectively, what it's looking at for the period from the 1st of April 2015 to the 31st of March 2017 is firstly, how many decisions were made on both major and non-major applications? And then, how many decisions that went to appeal were overturned? In other words, how many refusals were overturned? Or how many non-determinations were allowed? Now, because there's a lag in time between the end of the assessment period, 31st of March, for the period for appeals to run through the system, the government hasn't yet finalised these details, which is why you've only got interim figures for the major appeals, because we've got a number of appeals outstanding, they've taken a lot longer to get through the Planning Inspectorate than even the end of last year. But if the government were to guillotine the performance figures that are in, you'll see for the major quality statistic, we're running at 6.4%, which is comfortably below the 10% threshold that the government have set in terms of designation. However, we haven't got that finalised yet from the government. At the time of running these figures, we had 10 major appeal decisions still outstanding. We've had two come through this month, and they've both been allowed. So if we were to run the stats again, we'd be in a slightly worse position. Still not past the 10%, but heading that way, which is why we have to be very careful and keep a clear focus on the decisions that we make on major applications. The picture in respect of non-majors is much healthier. Again, the target is 10% or less. There's far more non-major decisions that are made by the council, far fewer of them as a proportion go to appeal, and therefore far fewer get overturned. So you'll see there, the percentage figure is only 1.56%. So generally speaking, we've got four performance indicators there. Three, very comfortable, reflecting excellent performance from your team. One, if the figures are guillotined at the end of December, we're okay, but we need to be vigilant about the decisions we make on majors. And I'm happy to take any questions, Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. I don't want to prolong it too much, because it's one of these subjects we can debate all night probably, but it is important that we are here, as we all know we are here, in a quasi-judicial capacity, and we must make our decisions on planning rules alone with the guidance of our officers. Doesn't mean we can't disagree, but it does mean that we need to make sure that our decisions are robust. It's as simple as that. So if you have any long discussion, please take it up with Steve outside this meeting. If you've got a brief question now, please ask it. councillor Adams?
Is there any plan by the government to make the inspectors' decisions more consistent? Because we don't necessarily find that the inspectors are consistent on their decisions in respect of the majors. One might take a view on one aspect of it, and another might take a different view on another. And therefore, it's very difficult for us to know exactly which ones will be allowed at appeal and which will be dismissed.
I'm not sure that anybody can answer that question for you, but anyone's brave enough to try. It even came up at the inquiry today, when the inspector himself was talking about the mysteries of the inspectorate. So, you know, I think there's a lot of inconsistency, simply because things change all the time. Inspectors come from different backgrounds, which doesn't help. I think engineers see things differently from town planners and from lawyers. It's just the way the world is, I'm afraid. But if you get the answer to it, councillor Adams, do share it, please. If everyone's quite happy then, can we move on to the main items? Should there be any site inspections arising from this meeting? And I shouldn't expect there will, but they will be held on the 27th of February, at a time to be agreed. And let's move straight on to the applications that we're looking at tonight. Both of the ones tonight are subject to public speaking. So the first one, A1, WA 2017 1857, land to the rear of Harz Cross 48, Petworth Road, Hazelmere. And Kayleigh, you're going to introduce us, aren't you?
Thank you, Chairman. This application has been brought before the area committee at the request of a local member. Please kind of draw the member's attention to the update sheet. Since the publication of the agenda, an amended block plan has been received showing the proposed bin storage. Further to this, an updated lamp has been received with amended plans showing the proposed single access appended. There are slight differences in the proposed plans for each plot. These will be discussed in this presentation. And there have been 41 additional letters of representation received. And further comments have been received from the County Highway Authority on these. As a result of these changes, conditions one and three have been amended. In addition to this update, an additional representation has also been received. This has not raised any new issues that has already been addressed. The application site, outlined in red, is located to the rear of numbers 48 and 50 Petworth Road. The site is located within the developed area of Hazelmere. There is a cul-de-sac Swan Barn Road to the west of the site, just here. And there's ancient woodland along the northern and eastern boundaries. Photograph A shows the... Sorry. The site comprises dense vegetation. In photograph A, you will see the ancient woodland along the boundaries. In photo B, it shows the view looking to the south-west, and number 48 can be seen here. And photo C shows the view towards Littlefield of Swan Barn Road. Photo A shows the access strip adjacent to number 48. Photo B shows the existing access on Petworth Road. And photo C shows the existing bank adjacent to Petworth Road. The application seeks the erection of two detached dwellings with detached garages, the creation of a new access, and closure of the existing access and associated landscaping. There would be a 15-metre buffer zone to the ancient woodland, subject to a landscape and ecological management plan that would be secured through a section 106 legal agreement. Both dwellings would have the same ground floor plan. They would have a floor area of 217 metres squared each on the ground floor. This slide shows the first floor plan. Both dwellings would have five bedrooms. There is a slight difference between the two plots. Plot two would have an additional window serving the master bedroom. Just highlighted this here for you. This slide shows the proposed roof design. There is a central roof lantern serving the landing. And this slide shows the front elevation of the proposed dwellings. This slide shows the rear elevations. The additional window serving the master bedroom for plot two is circled in green. And this slide shows the proposed side elevations for both the plots. This slide shows the proposed garage for plot one. It provides two parking spaces, cycle storage and bin storage. And this slide shows the garage plan for plot two. The proposal seeks the creation of a new access and closure of the existing access. There would be storage for bins on collection days just here. And the existing access is here. The bank would be reinstated where the existing access is, and soft landscaping is proposed. Officers consider that this would retain an element of enclosure and would be in keeping with the verdant character of the area. The top image shows the existing street scene. The existing access for 48 is just here. The middle image is an illustration of the proposed frontage, and the bottom image shows a close-up of the section of the above illustration. Planning history for the site is outlined in the agenda report. This slide shows two review schemes in 2011 and 2012. Whilst both of these incorporated a new access from Petworth Road, officers consider the current application to be materially different to the previous review schemes, as the current proposal seeks to reinstate the bank following closure of the existing access and soft landscaping. The matters of principle and technical judgment are: the effect on the SPAs, the impact on ancient woodland and trees, the impact on highways and parking. The matters of planning judgment which councillors are asked to consider this evening are: the impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and amenity space. The recommendation is as set out in the update sheet, that subject to conditions 1 to 18, the amendments and amendments to conditions 1 and 3, and a completed section 106 agreement to secure implementation in accordance with the submitted lamp, that permission be granted. Recommendation B is that in the event that a section 106 agreement is not completed within six months of the date of the resolution to grant planning permission, then planning permission be refused. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Kayleigh. As I said earlier, this is subject to public speaking, so could I ask Mr Michael Bird, an objector to the scheme, to speak first, please? I'm sure you've had the mechanism explained to you. You have four minutes, and it won't start until you start speaking.
I am objecting to this planning application on behalf of myself and 16 other residents on the following grounds: road safety, legality, spoiling the street scene, and overdevelopment. The proposed access from Petworth Road is unsafe for the following reasons. Firstly, it does not meet with the conditions of Surrey Highways Authority. The visibility display for the traffic pulling out onto Petworth Road is based on a two-metre setback, as clearly stated in the key of the applicant's drawing. But highways requirement is 2.4 metres minimum. This is not a typo. We have had it professionally checked, even if highways haven't. Secondly, the sightlines cannot be achieved without cutting back land and a retaining wall owned by the adjoining residents. A 2.4-metre sightline would make the matter worse. Thirdly, the speed survey is incorrect. They produce an average speed of 30.5 miles per hour. The survey for the previous application in 2011 gave an average of 34.5 miles per hour. We commissioned a fresh professional survey with a resultant speed of 37.6 miles per hour, as you might expect with today's traffic speeds. This speed is 23% more than that reported by the applicants, and would give rise to a highways requirement of 60-metre sightlines instead of the current 43 metres. Fourthly, there is no swept path analysis, but it is evident that vehicles will not be able to make a left turn from the left side of Petworth Road without pulling out into the path of oncoming vehicles obscured by the brow of the hill. This could explain why there is no swept path analysis. I hope that you have had the opportunity to study the comprehensive report by transportation experts, vision transport planning. Additionally, the application is unlawful, and I would draw your attention to the overlay of the land registry drawings with the planning application plan, which shows the site encroaches on the land of the 48 Petworth Road owners, despite an apparent declaration to the contrary. Insufficient weight has been put on the spoiling effect of the street scene, exposing number 48 to the road. The bank is an important characteristic of this road, as confirmed by previous planning inspectors, and the change would conflict with policies D1 and D4 of the local plan. The scheme is overdevelopment, and again, contrary to policies D1 and D4. The edge of urban area housing is typified by detached houses in spacious plots. The stated site area is 0.317 hectares, which after deducting access roads means the plots are substantially less than half the size they should be in order to be in keeping with the neighbourhood. The resultant small gardens will place enormous pressure on the wildlife buffer zone and provide insufficient outdoor and play areas, contrary to policy H10. I have no doubt that proposed access is dangerous, the scheme is unlawful, the street scene will be fundamentally spoilt, and the houses are out of keeping with the neighbourhood. And I would therefore ask that you reject the application.
Thank you very much, Mr Bird. If I could now ask Mrs Jane Terry to come forward, please, who is a supporter of the scheme?
Thank you, Chairman. The applicant has worked closely with the planning officer to ensure that matters of concern raised through the application process have all been addressed. This application should be judged on its own merits and assessed against current policy and consultee responses, rather than on any historic scheme. It's therefore noteworthy that whilst there is some local concern, the application has not received any objection from any statutory consultee. Changes have been made to the application to address local concerns, and I outline these now. The character of the surrounding area is predominantly large detached housing set within large landscape plots, with an extensive landscape buffer surrounding the site. The two dwellings have been designed in arts and crafts style, reflective of the surrounding local area. Each dwelling is set well back within the site, on land which slopes away from the road, such that they will not be prominent in the street scene. Whilst garden sizes are smaller than other plots in the locality, they're surrounded by a 15-metre buffer zone and spatially reflect the character of the area. The amenity of each plot is augmented by the landscape buffer, providing a green outlook onto the adjacent woodland. The committee report confirms that this arrangement for residential amenity is acceptable and in line with current policies D1 and D4. In terms of access and highway safety, the suggestion by objectors that the amended access does not meet current highway standards is incorrect. The highway officer has reconfirmed the revised single more central access further from neighbouring access points, and including the 2.4x45-metre sightlines in the revised drawings, is acceptable in highway terms. It meets the current highway standards and provides significant betterment on the existing substandard arrangement. In street scene terms, the access is narrower than previously proposed, the existing access will be stopped up, and the bank regraded and landscaped, such that the overall character of the street scene will be preserved. Ancient woodland and ecology. A 15-metre landscape strip ensures a buffer between the ancient woodland and the development. This is in line with standing advice given by Natural England and the Forestry Commission, and will be secured through a section 106 legal agreement. Surrey Wildlife Trust and Waverley's own tree officer confirm that the proposed arrangements are acceptable, and that the development will not cause any material harm to either the ancient woodland or to ecology. In conclusion then, the principle of development within the settlement boundary of Hazelmere is established. There are no statutory objections to the application in relation to highways, ancient woodland, or ecology, and the case officer is content that there will be no adverse impact on amenity, either for neighbouring residents or future occupants. The proposals conform to local plan policy. There are no matters which significantly or demonstrably outweigh the benefits, and the application should therefore be approved in accordance with the national planning policy framework. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Terry. Can I thank both speakers for speaking promptly and clearly? Could you turn your microphone off? Thank you very much, indeed. Members, open it up to you now. councillor Knowles?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Oh dear, there's so much to say that I'm not really knowing quite where to start, but let's look at each part as we go along, because it appears that in some of these papers, we're being misled. On the update, and let's deal with the width of the entrance. The update, a stretch of the sheet, says it is assumed that the two metres shown on the drawing is an error. Having been on this committee probably since Queen Victoria was on the throne, I seem to remember we're told every time, "You can't assume anything, we can only deal with what is in the papers." So we are here now being told, "Well, assume that it might be all right." Well, no, it says two. And if anybody has a slide rule and got the drawings from the original application, I would ask them to do so, because they'll find that it is two, and not 2.4. So it does not comply with the requirement of the highways authority. I'm astounded to see later on the update that the highways authority criminally neglectfully say they're not going to consider the secure visibility displays to accommodate drivers who break the law by travelling above the posted speed limit, them being fully aware that it's 38 miles an hour from the survey that was carried out only the week before, last over three or four days. I hope the officer that wrote that, if anything happened, would appear for the magistrate to explain that. And let's keep these papers so that they would have to. On the report, page 24, and the picture that came up at the top, the current application, and if you could put that back up on the screen, you'll note an airbrush has been used very conveniently to remove the existing property. It's been airbrushed out to make it look as if it's just an open space. But colleagues, if we look on the papers that we have received from Mr Bird, on the sixth page of those, there is a picture of last time. That gap had to be filled by stringent enforcement, if members remember. That's how it will look, not how it looks on the screen now, because that clearly is not correct. And say the bank will be reinstated, the smaller gap will be reinstated, and the larger gap opened, which would result in that view being seen from the road, which is completely different from the current layout of that road. For many of those reasons, I think this is very, very questionable, and I will need convincing to vote to support the officers on this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Knowles. Do the officers want to come back on the visibility display and the width? Have we got some accurate drawings?
Thank you, Chairman. So condition three has been amended to secure the details to be submitted to the council. We have also received this amended proposed... This drawing here, which shows there is the 2.4-metre depth required for the visibility displays. However, that would be submitted as part of the condition, and would need to be assessed by the county council as part of that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Kayleigh. Members? councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman. I know this site very well. I've been around quite a bit, not as long as councillor Knowles, obviously, but I know the road, and I know how fast the traffic goes there. And I'm surprised it's only 38 miles an hour. I thought it probably could be a bit more than that, and it's quite a dangerous road, it's a dangerous access. There are... I'm not surprised the statutory authorities haven't commented on this. They never do. They don't seem to be interested, in my opinion, particularly Surrey highways. There should be a large display here. It depends who you believe. Do you believe the applicants? Or do you believe the objectors and their thorough report sent to us? I know which one I believe. I'm not happy about this at all. And I know we need housing, but in this particular case, I think it's dangerous, and it's an accident waiting to happen. Thank you.
I think, councillor Edwards, we believe everybody. We have no other way of going through life, and we especially believe the statutory bodies who inform our officers, and on that alone must we make the decision. councillor King?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I sort of echo what councillor Edwards has just said, but I think anyone who's ever visited anyone on that road close by will recognise how incredibly difficult it is actually exiting those sites. It's on the brow of a hill, which you cannot see. It is a really dangerous... It's on the brow of a hill, which you cannot see, it is a really dangerous place. I mean, just going into Swan Barn Road next door, trying to get out of there when someone's coming roaring at 38 miles an hour, I don't believe it, is really difficult. And I used to visit somebody along that road, and they used to have to come out into the highway, across the road, to tell me it was clear so that I could get out. It is dangerous there. I'm sorry, I'm not happy with this at all. Thank you.
Officers, do you want to come back on this? Do you need some advice on...
The report that was prepared by the objectors has been assessed by the County Highway Authority. They have looked at that report in depth and concluded that the proposal would be safe from an access and egress point of view. The County Highway Authority have also looked at the visibility space themselves and are satisfied that the 2.4 by 43 metre visibility space can be achieved within either land owned by the applicant or within land that is designated highway land where works can take place to achieve those visibility spaces. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Louise. councillor Edwards? Oh, sorry, yes, thank you, Bill. Can I come back? Oh, sorry.
Madam Chairman and members, when the land title is deduced to us, we will carefully check the boundaries of the red line, which appears to be page eight, and that footprint, against the proposed access plan, which is on page 14. And the proposed entrance does seem to extend to the boundary between the two properties, which immediately abut the road, and on the face of it, and I'm not making any judgement on these plans, on the face of it, it would appear that this access here could fit, but we will check this very carefully, and if there is any serious anomaly, I have no doubt that we will likely bring this back before members and report any serious anomaly, or the Section 106 will not be completed within the required time period. This will be very carefully looked at, members.
I was just wondering if there's any case for deferral in this case? I mean, we seem to be uneasy about the information we've got. If there are further grounds, then by all means, we can make a decision. councillor Edwards?
Yeah, just going back on the comment from the highways authority, saying that the displays would be adequate, even though the increased, they obviously didn't apply their own standards to this, because if it's 38 miles an hour, then it needs to be 60 metre display on one side. We haven't got that, whatever happens, so they can't have believed the 38 miles an hour. That's the only understanding I have. I don't understand how they could accept something less than their standards. It doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry.
councillor King?
Thank you very much, Chairman, for letting me come back. While we're talking about the access road, and because the plans we have are just drawings, I wonder if I could be advised how close that access road is to Swan Barn property next door. It appears to me from the drawings I've got to be incredibly close, but I'd like to know just how close it actually is. No way of telling from the plans that we've got.
I'm sure the officers are working on that. Does anybody else wish to ask a question? councillor Inchball?
Thank you, Chairman. It does seem to me that when it comes to road safety, one should always err on the side of caution. Now, I'm not going to admit in public that I've been breaking the speed limit along there, but it is certainly my impression that cars or vehicles tend to go a lot, well, a bit faster than 30 miles an hour or 30.5 miles an hour. And it seems to me that there have been two surveys, one of which says 30.5 or something, and the other says 38. The safe thing to do is to believe the 38. The only other point I'd make on this application is that I think it is overdevelopment, I don't think it's in keeping with the local area, and I am very, very uncomfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Inchball. Do we have an answer to the question of Swan Barn, or are we still working on that? councillor Isherwood?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, there is a question, and as the objectors said, there's no mention of the words which were carried out on the site without planning permission. A simple site inspection would reveal that raised roadway has not been removed, which is a contravention of the enforcement notice of many years ago, and I would like an explanation of that. But if I look at the plan of these two very large houses, we're talking, I don't know, something way beyond my scale of one and a half million maybe, we see that the site area for house number two, I think it is, is 881 square metres. The house, according to the chart, covers 400 square metres, the garage 43, the hard standing 35, and the amenity space 413 square metres. I think those figures are correct, but what guarantee have we that those restrictions on condition of seven or eight? If you want to build a garden shed, a gazebo, a sunroom, whatever else, how are we going to condition that accurately and honestly? Is there any way that, you're not going to put your lawnmower away, because a two-car garage is hardly going to accommodate all the bits and pieces one has, so there are going to be areas that we are looking for. I really do think this is an overdevelopment of this particular site. I don't like the access either, but I'd like an answer on those questions, please. Thank you, officers.
Right, officers, have we got an answer to all of that?
Yeah, firstly, in relation to the condition that removes permitted development rights for outbuildings, the reason for that condition is really because of the 15 metre buffer, which is between the ancient woodland and the dwellings themselves, and because of the small size of garden that remains. It's not to say that they can't have permission for a shed, but it brings it back into local authority control in that should the occupants want to put up an outbuilding, they will need to apply for planning permission to do that. So that is why officers have recommended that condition, and I think Kayleigh has measured the distance between the boundary and the new access, so she's able to answer that query.
Yes, so the distance from Swan Barn access to the proposed access is approximately 50 metres, and that is approximately 15 metres from the existing, from the boundary of the site. It would, I'd like to note that it is further, the proposed new access is further away than the existing access, so therefore would be safer, and as the County Highway Authority have commented, they consider the revised access to be safer than the existing access. Thank you, Chairman.
Do you wish to come back?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd just like a comment on the site inspection and the raised roadway that's not been removed as per our enforcement of many years ago. Perhaps the officers could...
Sorry, Victoria, I could... I take it this is the access road that, well, that did lead into the rear of 48 Petworth Road. I mean, when we visited back in 2013, it was considered that that enforcement notice had been complied with, that it had been levelled and it had been, and the fence had been erected as... Well, I'll certainly answer the queries and we can have another look. Be happy to do that.
Thank you, Victoria. There's nothing worse than a debate that goes on. It hasn't, it has, it hasn't, it has. So if you could look into that and get back to those of us who are doubting.
Of course. Thank you, Chairman.
Regardless of the enforcement case, as members, you are required to assess this application on its own merits this evening, regardless of that particular enforcement issue in any event. Thank you, Chairman.
Right, members, are we ready to move to the recommendations? Anybody else wish to speak? Unless the officers wish to come back, so I don't want to stop anyone from speaking. Right, let's move then to the recommendation, which is on the update sheet. Make sure I get the right one. Just the one, isn't it? Yep, just the one on that sheet, yeah. So the revised recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 18, with the amendments to conditions 1 and 3, which are on the update sheet above this, and a completed 106 agreement to secure implementation in accordance with a submitted LMP, prepared by Acorn Ecology Landscape and Ecological Management Plan, and dated January 2018, that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission on this site, please?
That's none.
Right, I'll take this straight to...
And then vote against.
All right. Can I see all those against the resolution?
That's eight, and one abstention.
And one abstention, do we have? In which case, please, could I have a revised recommendation?
Madam Chairman, if I could, that the application be refused on a number of grounds. Loss of visual amenity by the removal of the bank, the impact on the residential amenity of neighbours with the access road, and also concerns over the highway as set out in the professional planning report by Vision Transport Planning Limited.
Thank you, councillor Noles. I should have got a second before you gave me your reasons, but we'll still count them. Do I have a second, or do you have a second for your...
I was second, Chairman, but I think we should add in there that it is overdevelopment.
Right, does anybody else have any grounds, any further grounds that they'd like to object to this application on? It's very poor English, but you know what I mean. councillor King?
Sorry, Chairman, could I add insufficient amenity space as well, please, for the size of the houses?
Right, officers, do you wish to comment on what we have said so far, or do you have a coherent form of wording already for us?
I would suggest with regards to the first issue, which is the safe access, the proposal would not provide safe access and egress due to insufficient visibility, I'm sorry, would not provide safe access and egress to the site due to insufficient visibility in conflict with policy M2 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, policy ST1 of the draft Waverley Borough Local Plan 2017, part 1, and paragraph 32 of the MPPF. And with regards to the second one, I would recommend the proposal by reason of its, the proposal by reason of the scale of development and insufficient amenity space would result in overdevelopment of the site, resulting in a cramped and crowded layout which would be out of character with the surrounding area, contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, policy TD1 of the draft Waverley Borough Local Plan, and paragraph 17, 58, 60, and 64 of the MPPF. Does that capture everything that...
councillor Isherwood has just written two words down.
Yeah. Not those two words, no. There is a lack of a sweatpath analysis on the entrance for things like the refuse vehicle, and I think that's absolutely essential. I just can't see how one of those big vehicles could get in there at all.
councillor Inchball?
And I think we should also add in the potential harm to neighbours and amenity.
The existing neighbours rather than new neighbours, yeah.
Madam Chairman, that was in my initial, and also the street scene, so that seemed to have been dropped, but thank you.
Yes, Steve?
Yeah, if I could just ask the council to elaborate on what aspects of residential amenity we're talking about. Is it, you know, it could be outlook, overlooking, loss of privacy, noise and disturbance, and for officers to obviously successfully defend the refusal, and obviously for the public and the applicant to fully understand what the points of concern are so potentially they can be addressed. I think you just need to drill down a little bit more on what aspects of residential amenity we're actually talking about.
Yes, thank you. Well, if you look at the update sheet with the drawing, you'll see the road goes in right close to the houses, to the houses both sides, so there's going to be movement, headlights into the properties, and also overlooking further down on, I can't see the name of the house, Littlefield, I'm told it's called. So they'll get the lights and the overlooking there. And then the loss of the visual amenity is so well set out in that picture, which I'm sure you have, which completely changes the street scene. Thank you.
You've got that. So I have to say, I think any construction that has to have a certain amount of obscure glass is always questionable, and as soon as you've got two houses so close together that you have to use, rather than in just one room, obscure glass, it always makes me feel that we are putting these two close together, and I think it's, you know, a poor design personally, but I'm not asking that to go into our list. Right, Louise, how are you doing for a list?
Can I just ask a quick question? Was the harm to visual amenity about the view from the street scene, right, so I would recommend that that is incorporated into the refusal reason that I have already read out, the one relating to the scale of development and insufficient amenity space resulting in overdevelopment of the site, I would include in that, and harm to the street scene, because that fits better with that, yeah.
Yeah, I think the harm to the street scene is certainly something we all feel. councillor Hess?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was going to say that for houses of this size with this number of bedrooms, it's pretty well that you'll have children, and if you had my children in those houses, you'd permanently have their frisbees, cricket balls, footballs in the neighbours' gardens, because there simply isn't room for them to hurl all this stuff about in those gardens, it seems to me. And I think that if we're going to consider impact on the neighbours, that hasn't come up. I'm not sure if I phrased it in an appropriate manner, but that is going to be an inevitable intrusion on the neighbours' houses, it seems to me.
I think we covered that in amenity space, but I may be wrong. Louise, do we have a definitive list of reasons for refusal?
Yes, so the first two I've already read out. The third one, the proposal would result in harm to neighbouring amenity by reason of overlooking to Littlefield and light pollution, contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, policy TD1 of the draft Borough Local Plan 2017, and paragraph 17 of the MPPF 2012. I would caution against the frisbee comment, really, because you do get, you do get much smaller gardens than this where children do play, and as we have picked up about insufficient amenity space in the second reason for refusal on visual impact, I think we could kind of cover that in there. Finally, I would recommend a fourth reason for refusal, the reason being is that the legal agreement has not yet been completed in relation to the ancient woodland, sorry, in relation to the buffer zone to the ancient woodland, and for that reason I would recommend in the absence of a completed legal agreement, the proposed development would create a residential use adjacent to designated ancient woodland, which is also subject to a tree preservation order. This is likely to lead to future pressures that may result in a deterioration of the valuable landscape resource, which would be detrimental to biodiversity and the visual amenity and character of the area, and therefore contrary to policies D1, D4, D5, and D7 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, policy TD1 of the draft Waverley Borough Local Plan 2017, and paragraph 17 and 118 of the MPPF. Hopefully that captures everything that members...
Well, I was just going to ask if anyone would like to repeat that, but I think we'll move to the alternative recommendation, please, that permission be refused for all the reasons that Louise has just illustrated for us. Can I see... Can I see all those in favour, please, of a refusal?
That's unanimous.
So that's completed?
Yes.
Thank you very much indeed, gosh. Right, moving on then to item A2. By all means, anybody who wishes to may leave at this point. Or move, just change places. This has to be the most poorly designed public gallery in terms of noise, doesn't it? You just can't get up quietly. Right, shall we move on then to item A2? Marchance Hill, Tilford Road, Hinedhead. The erection of four buildings to provide guest and staff accommodation, erection of classroom building, alterations and extensions to existing reception and kitchen buildings, alterations and extensions to existing activity lake, parking, and access routes following demolition of existing accommodation buildings and associated outbuildings. And it's Rebecca who's going to introduce this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So the site measures 16 and a half hectares and is located on the northern side of Cricket Close, to the east of Tilford Road. The site comprises a large established children's activity centre, which contains a range of buildings and leisure facilities. It's operated by PGL Travel Limited. The site currently caters for up to 438 guests with 138 staff beds. So the existing buildings on site are largely confined to the centre of the site, clustered around the main access road. The surrounding area comprises a mixture of residential areas and open fields. So on the next three slides, I will show members the existing buildings which are to be demolished or extended as part of the proposal. So firstly, in the top photograph on the left-hand side, you can see the tuck shop, meeting room, and Captain Jack's building. This is to be demolished to make way for guest accommodation. On the right-hand side of the photo is the existing reception and administration building, and this is to be extended as part of the proposal. Turn into the bottom two photos on the left-hand side. This is an existing single-storey staff accommodation building, and this would be demolished to make way for a new two-storey staff accommodation with parking adjacent. Turn into the bottom right. So this is the existing dining and kitchen area, and this would be extended as part of the proposal. On the top photo, this is an existing guest accommodation building. This would be demolished as part of the proposal to make way for a new guest accommodation building. Turn into the bottom photo. Members will see on the left-hand side of the photograph is an existing quad bike store. This would be demolished, and a new guest accommodation building would be erected in its place. The existing accommodation that you can see on the right-hand side of the bottom photo, that would remain as part of the proposal. In the top photograph, members will see the existing archery area and the sports hall just to the left-hand side of it. So the archery range is to be demolished as part of the proposal, and it would make way for a new classroom building. Turn into the bottom photograph. This is the driveway into the site. This would be widened as part of the proposal to allow for two-way traffic. On the next two photos, I'll focus on the access to the site. So in the top photograph, members will see this is the existing access point off Tilford Road, turning into Cricket Close. And the bottom two photographs show the viewpoints either side of the existing access. So firstly, looking what should be north-west of the access on the bottom left, and then to the south-east of the access on the bottom right. So once you've turned off Tilford Road onto Cricket Close, the top photograph shows then the access into the site itself, and the bottom photograph shows the rest of Cricket Close. This leads to some playing fields and the House of Bethany at the very end. So I'm going to turn members' attention now to the existing and proposed block plans. I will try to go through each of the elements and do my best to point them out in terms of where they are on the site. So if I turn to A, which I'm pointing at now, this would involve the demolition of an existing guest accommodation and the erection of a new guest block. So this will be replacing the existing building, which I'm pointing at. B would involve the demolition of the quad bike store, which members saw in the photograph, and the erection of a new guest accommodation block. Working down to area C, this would involve the demolition of the existing meeting room and tuck shop, and erection of a new guest accommodation building. Turning to D, this would involve alterations and extension of the existing kitchen and dining block. Moving to E, just to the right, this would involve the demolition of an existing staff accommodation building and the erection of a new staff accommodation building. F would be the area adjacent to the new staff accommodation, which would be a parking area for staff members. G would involve an extension to the existing car and coach parking area. Moving to the north of the site, so to H, this would involve the extension to the existing activity lake. Moving down to J, this would involve the demolition of an existing archery range, and this would be provider... Sorry, this would be then involving the erection of a new classroom building. Get my mouse back. Moving to K, this would... Sorry, there. That would involve an extension to the existing reception and administration building. And then finally, to L, this would involve the widening of the access road, which I pointed out in the photographs previously. There would also be a lot of little circles, as you can see. Sorry, they're not very clear. But these little areas would be additional activity zones within the site. So overall, the proposed development would provide for an increase of 366 children, 58 adult guests, and 71 staff. So in total, that would be an increase of 495 spaces on site. However, I should point out that not all of the bed spaces are sold, mainly due to the different group sizes, girls not sharing with boys, and groups not sharing rooms. So actually, there would in fact be an under occupancy of the total beds available. The applicant has set out that of the total 862 future spaces, it's anticipated that 784 would be occupied at any one time during the peak season. So turning to the individual elements, members will see the proposed guest accommodation blocks on screen. These would be two-storey in height with fully pitched roofs. They would be located adjacent to existing built form on site, so they would not extend into any of the wider woodland areas. Turning to the kitchen and dining hall, so this would be extended to accommodate the increase in guest numbers on site. The extension would provide for additional seating, catering capacity, and toilet facilities. There would be a ramped access provided to serve the building, and the elevations would be clad in weathered timberboard with grey roof tiles. Turning now to the staff accommodation. So the proposed staff accommodation would be two-story. This would replace an existing single-story building. It would provide for 178 bed spaces and would be located within an existing clearing in the woodland. Looking at the parking areas, the existing car and coach park would be enlarged, and there would be a new formal staff parking area provided to the proposed staff accommodation building. Members will see that this is the extension proposed to the existing activity lake. This would obviously encourage children on site to undertake in greater raft building activities, along with canoeing as well. The classroom building proposed, this would replace an existing archery range. The building would be single-story with a pitched roof, and it would feature a red brick plinth, and the walls would be clad in larch, which would be a representative of the other buildings elsewhere on site. So an extension is proposed to the existing administration and reception building to provide for additional office space. This extended building would continue to be single-story with wheelchair access, and the materials would match the existing building. Turning now to the access works. So there are a number of proposed improvements to the junction of Cricket Close and Tilford Road, and these would be as follows. The curb line would be modified to increase the width of the road for the first 20 metres, which would then tie back into the existing road width. So the area we're talking about is this first 20 metres here, and it would be widened. The giveway line on Cricket Close would be repositioned to improve the visibilities at the access point. Double yellow lines would be marked on Cricket Close. There would be a formalised one-metre-wide footpath that would be provided on the north-western side of Cricket Close for the first 20 metres. Street furniture and signage would be repositioned where necessary. And in addition to these works, there would be a number of highway safety improvements secured as part of the Section 278 works with the county council. This would include the installation of road humps on the approach to the uncontrolled crossing, so in this area here. And there would, of course, be associated signage and road markings with that. There would be some wooden bollards installed on the highway verge. Also, an on-street parking bay on the southern side of Tilford Road would be provided, which would help formalise the existing on-street parking arrangements. And a vehicle activated speed limit sign would be installed on Tilford Road westbound, so in this area here, which would be to the south-east of the Cricket Close junction. Turning now to the driveway into the site. This would be widened to six and a half metres, which would accommodate the two-way traffic, and the widening area is shown on yellow, in yellow rather. Just to add, the existing internal road system facilities that allows for access for emergency services, deliveries, and refues, and that wouldn't change. So the determining issues are set out on screen. Officers are satisfied, in this instance, that very special circumstances exist, such that the proposed development would be acceptable within the green belt. It would sit appropriately within the site and would not encroach into the wider woodland areas. In officer's opinion, there would be no impact, material harm rather, to the AOMB, AGLV, SPA, or SNCI. The current proposal has addressed previous reasons for refusal. Those included highways and drainage matters. Both the county highway authority and the lead local flood authority raise no objections subject to suitable conditions. Overall, officers consider that the proposal would enable a large number of visitors to be accommodated on the site to take advantage of the outdoor sport and recreation activities. The existing use of the site is well-established, and there would be no adverse impacts which would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of the development. If I can just turn members' attention to the update sheet, there has been an additional neighbour representation received following the drafting of the agenda reports. Officers have commented on this and are satisfied that all matters have been satisfactorily addressed. Apologies if members haven't had sight of that. I would just add, it is only one additional neighbour representation which has been received. The matters raised within that additional representation have been covered within the report. So the recommendation is as set out within the agenda reports. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca. As I say, this is also subject to public speaking, so could I ask and object to Mr Chris... Was it Mr Chris? Mrs?
It's a missa.
It is missa, that's right. Sorry, I've just got down Chris a bit informally here. Mr Chris Filer, who's going to speak against the proposal. Thank you. Four minutes, once again, from when you start speaking.
Okay, I have some notes here, which will easily take up four minutes, and probably be longer, but I won't get away with that. You've just heard from the summary of the planning consent. There's things to note here. There's 800, there'll be 800 plus more... Will be more beds associated with this development. All those people have to get there. And I represent the local residents of the area, and we are blighted at the moment with constant coach movements, and we don't welcome this increase in traffic movements to accommodate this expansion. I'll now, I'll read from my set notes. We are a local resident protest group. We have a website, pglaction.co.uk. The site posts and collects relevant information about all the expansion plans and the objections. The local residents are not in a position to provide technical counter-arguments to the official reports associated with this planning application, but we can apply common sense and experience of the current PGL situation over many years. We do not support this extensive and damaging planning request within the green belt. There are 43 objections to date, which are shown in the Waverley Planning Application website. Haysmere Council refuse planning permission recently to this expansion, and we would endorse that. The Haysmere Herald call PGL a theme park in the trees. Well, that's what it is. They are a self-contained unit within the green belt and offering not only noise pollution to the residents, but traffic movement pollution as well. I lived for four decades on Tilford Road. I've grown up with PGL. I've experienced, and my fellow residents who have similar residential histories can talk from experience and first-hand knowledge of the current chaos of PGL's coach activities, delivering and collecting people from the site. Emergency stops are common, emergency reversing and irritating reversing sirens, illegal ten-point turns, house vibrations, overreving of coaches, laboured call-up coaches up Tilford Road to the A3, which is their preferred route of entry and exit, plus, of course, fast descends from the A3 down Tilford Road, all very polluting and dangerous. One additional point. In very recent years, the growth of cycle traffic up and down Tilford Roads, the devil's punchbowl, has exploded, especially at weekends. With the highway proposal, coaches will swing out further on exiting Cricket Close because of the proposed curb extensions. The cyclists and cyclists in convoy, which is usually the norm, come silently down the hill at around 30 miles an hour. This is common, and they don't want to find a two-tonne coach on their side of the road when it's too late. There are no measures planned for traffic calming down, coming down from the A3. PGL state this is their preferred route. The residents know how dangerous the junction of Cricket Close and Tilford Road is, and there is nothing in the planning application that decreases their risks. This junction is not in fact a junction, but a crossroads with Heathside Lane. Private cars, council bin, recycle vehicles use this lane, plus grocery delivery vehicles, but there is no mention in the traffic report about the dangers of this crossroad. Heathside Lane is ignored. It's directly opposite Cricket Close. At least one local resident whose property backs on Cricket Close believes they own part of Cricket Close. How can PGL Highways Agency propose changes to the road that doesn't belong to them? The scale of development, as we said, incorporates an increased floor space by 6,046 square metres. The increase of 366 guests, 58 adults, 71 staff, amounted to an overall increase in accommodation spaces of 495, so totaling 800 accommodation capacity. These horrendous numbers, and residents object to this level of industrialisation in a rural green belt location.
Well done. I was going to say, I'll give you 10 seconds. Thank you very much, Mr Filer.
Okay. I can, I have more, but obviously I couldn't deliver it today, so I can send it to you in email if you wish.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Could I ask now Ellie Caff, who is a supporter, to come and speak to us? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity of addressing you this evening on behalf of PGL Travel. The application before you represents the resubmission of a previous planning application, which was refused on the 18th of August 2016. As outlined in your committee report, only two reasons for refusal were attached to that decision relating to drainage and highways. The drainage objection was resolved, however, confirmation of this was not received until after the decision. Subsequently, PGL instructed SLR Consulting to review the reasons for refusal, and we have since been working with the highway authority to address their original concerns. This has involved a full review of the highway situation, its operation, and the preparation of a new TA. Critically, the TA has been the subject of a Stage 2 safety audit now approved by the county council. These proposals have therefore passed the safety audit process. As part of the resubmission, we have also provided additional information in relation to drainage, noise, and visual impact, and undertaken a formal public consultation alongside meeting individuals who could not attend. The outcome of this work has all contributed to the improvement in the management of the site. The outcome of this work has all contributed to the improvements proposed as part of the scheme before you tonight. Notably, none of the improvements to the access would be delivered without this application proposal, and we consider that the overall package of benefits represents an additional positive material consideration which should be weighted in favour of the proposals. In addition to the highway improvements recommended through our technical transport work, the following improvements are a direct response to consultation comments received: An amendment to Cricket Close to retain informal parking; The widening of the PGL access drive to accommodate two-way movements; Additional advanced signage; A financial contribution towards a vehicle activated sign. These measures therefore go beyond what the Highway Authority required to remove their objections to the 2016 application. In addition to this, in response to local concerns about certain activities and their potential for noise, PGL has implemented a range of measures relating to footpath use, singing and the closure of Echo Point to address the concerns about the site's current operation. The application site has been in its current use for over eighty years, and notwithstanding its location in Green Belt, it provides appropriate facilities for outdoor sport and recreation and represents a developed site within the Green Belt. Both of these circumstances mean that the development as proposed can be considered appropriate development. Notwithstanding this, the proposals also deliver a range of benefits, as detailed in our submission, which would also outweigh any perceived harm. In conclusion, the PGL site makes a positive contribution to the local economy and the management of the site and the wider area. The application proposals will enhance this role, delivering improvements to an important learning facility, securing wider landscape and ecological benefits, increasing the positive impact on the local economy and as a local employer. As part of the application process, PGL have sought to engage positively with its neighbours, and will continue to encourage this dialogue in the future. The principle of the expansion of the site is supported by the Town Council, notwithstanding their highway concerns, which have now been fully considered as part of the Phase Two safety audit. Therefore, given that the two previous reasons for refusal have been addressed to the full satisfaction of your technical advisers, and that additional highway improvements have been incorporated which exceed those required to make the proposal acceptable to the Highway Authority, we consider that the proposals before you now represent an acceptable development, and we hope that you will be able to support your officer's recommendation and approve them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Caff. Could I ask you just to turn the microphone off? Thank you very much indeed. Right, councillor Ishwood wishes to go first, you won't be surprised to hear.
I think I was referred to as an angry old man a little earlier today, Mr. Grumpy. Yeah, sorry about that. I called this application in, which has been raging since 2015. A number of comments I wish to make that refer basically to PGL's headquarters in that, right from the beginning, I asked that public meetings were held to discuss this matter. One was held on the eighteenth of July 2017. There were eighteen feedbacks from about twenty-eight people who attended. I wasn't even aware of that meeting, so it wasn't really very public, I apologise for that. I think I had some worthwhile points to make. A number of points come to mind, particularly with the SLR report. They talk about pedestrian crossings, they're not, they're pinch points, there are three of them on the Tilford Road, and I refer to it as the Tilford Road, not Tilford Road East. The other one is Tilford Road, that they call Tilford Road West, is actually the 287 Chert Road, but that's a small matter. But the transport statement by SLR was interesting, it talked about this pinch point being a pedestrian crossing. Well, the other two go into Laurelhedges, so you don't get very far there. The eighty-five percentage speed northbound, i.e. uphill, is thirty-eight point one miles an hour in the thirty mile an hour zone. The southbound bit, uphill, is thirty-nine point two miles an hour, it's faster. And I can vouch for the fact that traffic certainly travels at a great speed than those percentile figures. There are four thousand seven hundred and ten movements a day they talk about, and many of those going way over the speed limit. But of course, we're in a residential area where lots of people are travelling into their homes, garages and all the other roads in Beacon Hill, so they'll be travelling a lot slower than that. The average speed is not something to be taken kindly. Therefore, I would ask that we install not only the sudden speed sign, but also a northern one as well. I think it has to be on both sides of Cricket Close. I appreciate that the site is going to increase in activity, but if you look at the NPPR, chapter one starts off, it's very clear that it's well-covered and the involvement is there. I make a point on the number of guests, well, the bed space has increased by ninety-seven per cent, the staff by thirty-eight per cent. We look at the road plan, and I'm not sure where it is now, but for example, they talk about traffic coming from the north on the A287, Farnham, up Chert, and it says, you will see J.C.'s on the left, you turn left down there, down Beacon Hill Road. Horror of horrors, it's double parked on both sides of the road. We have got school coaches that now drop the, apart from one who was not taken out, request to heart, they drop their children in Wood Road and they walk home from there. Quite safe and sound policy. But to go down Beacon Hill Road is a disaster. Their other bit says, leaving the A3 southbound, cross the bridge at Hazel Grove and take the third exit on the roundabout, that puts you on the northbound slip road to the A3. So could we please have that sorted out? So that's the road plan, my thoughts on that. Cricket Close leads to another bit of PGL, the Old Nunnery. That road is very badly potholed, they are the main users, there's one house, Mrs. Maddox's house up there on Cricket Close. I would like to think that PGL would actually reinstate the road to a proper surface, and I would like that to be. A recommendation in our final report when it goes out. I do have a lot of sympathy with PGL. The local manager has been a tremendous supporter of Beacon Hill. The current one and the previous ones have all been governors of the primary school. Whenever any heavy lifting is done, Christmas lights or whatever else, their staff come down willingly and lend the muscle that people like me are no longer capable of doing. They are good neighbours to the community. They do employ a number of local people, not a great number, but hopefully they will increase that number. But the staff members come from all over, great number from the UK, but from New Zealand, from Canada, from Poland. It's a real community effort. I do enjoy what they are doing, it gets the young people away from their Xboxes sitting in front of a television or whatever else. They enjoy the fresh air, they enjoy activities, and I think probably the greatest noise I hear is from the Hindhead playing field when the footballers are out there, not only the young kids playing football, but it's their parents who I can hear half a mile away, so that's a problem. But it is the Hindhead Playing Field Association, it's a grand outfit up Cricket Close as well, as you can probably, well, you can just see on the map there, thank you very much indeed. MPPF quite clearly says that this is allowable in the Green Belt. I have my reservations, but that's as far as I can go. I would ask that we put a request in for a further speed activated sign on the southern side, on the north and south side of Cricket Close, and that we do ask PGL to consider resurfacing Cricket Close itself. Thank you very much, members.
Right, thank you. Can the officers just give us advice on that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, just to pick up those couple of points, so firstly with regards to the second speed sign, I think this could be covered within the existing recommendation A. For clarity, I would suggest we insert reference to including the provision of two speed signs. So if I just read that out, so recommendation A would be that, subject to the completion of a Section 106 agreement to secure highway works and contributions, including the provision of two speed signs, permission be granted, subject to following conditions and informatives. Of course, if then that is not provided, it would be refused, and that's covered by recommendation B. Turning to the other matters, I would suggest that there are two additional informatives imposed. Firstly, if I read out some wording, as the major users of Cricket Close, the applicant is strongly encouraged to undertake repair and maintenance works to improve the road surface of Cricket Close for all users. And then, secondly, it is encouraged that an information document is provided to all users of the site and is displayed on their website, encouraging access to the site to avoid Beacon Hill Road. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca. councillor Inchboard?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very concerned that the tuck shop has disappeared. No comment from you on that, all right, okay. I'm not very comfortable with the architectural style of the new buildings, they look as if they were designed for use by Her Majesty's Prison Service. But I couldn't possibly, I couldn't really object to it on those grounds. I am concerned about highway safety, but have there actually, is there actually a record of accidents along that road, or, you know, in the recent past? You're nodding, councillor Ishwood.
Yes, well, the last one I think was when it went into the pinch point and the post, which are already there. They talked about installing oak posts down there, I heard of it somewhere, well, they're already there, so they're simply going to move them. But yeah, there have been a number of minor accidents, no serious injury accidents.
And there, let's, can you just turn this off? I mean, there's quite a lot of highway measures, the, both signs are in addition, or an extra sign is in addition to what's already planned to slow traffic down, so with the extra informatives as well, I think, you know, we are covering road safety as coherently as we possibly can. I've got councillor Knowles.
Could I just finish?
Oh, sorry, councillor Inchboard.
But, okay, well, in that case, I'm comfortable about the highways then. The fact that they have addressed the two reasons for refusal of the previous application, it seems to me that really we have no grounds for refusal, and I will be voting in favour.
Thank you very much, councillor Inchboard. Any other councillors wish to speak? councillor Knowles?
Thank you, Chairman. It was just on, councillor Inchboard's made a comment regarding the look of the buildings. I know the Surrey Hills AOMB adviser has made a comment on the concern regarding the man-made external materials, and I wondered if there's anything can be done about that or what the position is. And just on the highways, yes, I think we all have concerns. When I've been down, I've thought it was more like a country lane, but there we are. Let's just hope it'll be safe.
Yes, we were told it was wooden grey tiling or grey or something, that's what I thought we were told. councillor Adams, do you want to go by while we're waiting?
Yes, I'm likewise very disappointed that actually in the AOMB, which was supposed to be an example of excellent design, we've got these barrack blocks going up. I mean, I really think that that is quite unnecessary, it could have been made a lot more attractive, says things, they're knocking down, knocking down the old buildings and building new ones. So just because we, the two items that were, have been put right, that were refused, what, two years ago, doesn't mean that times haven't moved on, and the government is taking much more interest in design and giving much more authority to neighbourhoods to actually focus on design. So I'm not at all happy about the design of these buildings, I think much more effort could have been done. The other one I'm not quite sure about is Natural England and Surrey Hills. I mean, I don't know exactly how this is used, so all the people, apart from when they arrive and leave on coaches, are they all confined within the basic site? Because otherwise, I mean, if we're having that amount of additional residents, then normally when we're one kilometre within the spa, we would expect to see SANG provided. And again, certainly in sites that we're now talking to Milford about, whereas previously Natural England has just said, don't worry, you know, Hackley Common's big enough, they're now saying, we think it should be treated in the same way as the Thames Basin Heath. And so I'm surprised that they've just accepted the fact there should be all these additional residents there without any comment on SANG.
Thank you, councillor Adams. As far as I know, they do these short residential, and tire the children out with activity on site, and then put them to bed, and they sleep like logs. This is as far as I know, it's what I'm told. councillor Hess?
I'd like to start by saying, I live very close to the facility, and I'm a big supporter of it, and my children have been to the site, and I have therefore been familiar with PGL over a number of years, and I think it is, I'd echo councillor Ishwood's words and say that it is a very laudable enterprise. But as we've gone through this, a few points have been made that I would like to comment on. First of all, the vehicle activated speed warnings. Now, I have tried to do some work on the issue of road safety and speeding vehicles on and off over a few years, and I dare say councillor Ishwood has also. But are these the same vehicle activated speed warnings that I was categorically told could not be erected in this area because there was no stretch of road that was long enough in order to capture speed of vehicles that would allow this system to function? Maybe technology's moved on, but the last time I tried to pursue this, I was categorically told it was a non-starter, and that was maybe two years ago. So could I have some, you know, I'd like a definitive reassurance that the system is capable and will function effectively. Secondly, I would have really appreciated some sort of analysis about the change that the increased population at the site, or what the potential for change was and what the impact would be. And actually, the children do seem to be pretty quiet, they occasionally have discotheques and you hear the music, but what I think we all have identified is the traffic risk and what the impact of these additional coach or vehicle movements will be. Because, as I think came up the last time the application came before us, Cricket Close is simply the wrong place to have a heavy or a high-volume access point, and I can't remember where the arguments went last time about moving the entrance further down the road, which would address all sorts of issues, and there may well be very sensible cost issues or whatever. well be very sensible cost issues or whatever. But again, I regret not, at least if it's there, I haven't found the, the analysis of what change, what the impact of this change will be on that junction and therefore on road users. Moving on to the record of accidents, the answer is, it depends who you talk to. If you talk to Surrey Highways and the police, they'll say, accidents? We've never had an accident on that road. And indeed, I think that is absolutely, that wasn't the words they used, but I was told there's never been an accident. If you talk to residents, I know of one lady, I don't know if she still lives there, but she has, she lives in such fear of, of, of traffic on the road that she no longer, if I recall, she no longer parks her car in her own house, and there are, I mean, and I'm one of the Sunday cyclists as well, and I've stopped and had to stop and give reassurance, and in some cases go down to my house to get a jack so people...
I don't mean to be rude, councillor Hess, but you are rather, and we have actually covered transport, but by all means, you know, we'll get an answer for you, and if you have a new point, by all means, make it.
All right, I think that in terms of, let's move on then to the maintenance of Cricket Close. It's all very well to say that they're, PGL will be encouraged to maintain the road, but we do really need a statement of, of quality. To what quality are they invited to, to maintain the road? Otherwise, that statement is meaningless. And as for the design of the buildings, at this late stage, is there anything we can do to, to, to encourage a more harmonious design, if that's the right form of words? And, and for that, I would welcome guidance from the officers.
Well, the answer to that, I can tell you, you don't have to wait for the officers, we have to judge what's before us. We can't redesign it, you know, on the hoof. So there we have it, we have the application, we have reassurance about traffic, and I think councillor Isherwood wishes to come back.
Thank you very much, my honourable chairman. Two quick points. One is that the Beacon Hill Focus Group are already going to establish the speed watch, civil speed watch on the Tilford and the Chert Road, and the police are on side with that, so that's something to hopefully reduce the speed, as it has done in Chert quite dramatically. And the other thing is just another good neighbour bit. PGL entertain Beacon Hill School every Friday afternoon, the senior members, senior form, to their establishment, give them a whole range of new ideas, expand their horizon. It's a tremendous offering at no cost whatsoever to the school. It's PGL offering something. It really is good to hear.
Right, does any other member wish to ask a question? I don't think councillor Hess got his definitive answer to whether these signs, I don't think we have one, do we? Looking at your face, Louise.
I mean, I can't answer definitively, it's not my area of expertise. However, the County Highway Authority are satisfied that these would work along Tilford Road and that they would lead to a reduction in speeds that would lead to a safer environment on Tilford Road itself. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak, or can we move to the recommendation? So, everyone quite happy, officers, you don't wish to come back? No? In that case, shall we move to the recommendation? Recommendation A, that subject to the completion of a Section 106 agreement to secure highway works and contributions, including the provision of two speed signs, not sure if it's exactly the same wording, and subject to conditions 1 to 25, and informatives 1 to 12, including the fact that PGL's frequent users of Cricket Close should be strongly encouraged to resurface, to maintain the road, how we phrasing that to, they should be encouraged to do, what, Rebecca, did you say, to resurface the road, to maintain Cricket Close to a high level?
If I just read out, so these would be two additional informatives, I would suggest they're 13 and 14. So firstly, 13, as the major users of Cricket Close, the applicant is strongly encouraged to undertake repair and maintenance works to improve the road surface of Cricket Close for all users. And then, secondly, which will be informative 14, it is encouraged that an information document is provided to all users of the site and is displayed on their website, encouraging access to the site to avoid Beacon Hill Road. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, yes, that's definitely clearer than the, what I scribbled down, what you were saying the first time round, so thank you very much. So, subject to the 106 to secure highways works, the contribution for speed signs, conditions 1 to 25, and the new informatives 1 to 14, the recommendation is that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission, please?
One, two, three, four, five, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And those against granting permission and abstentions? Two. And there's a recommendation B, which I take it we have to use, that in the event that a 106 agreement is not completed within six months of the date of the resolution to grant permission, permission be refused for the reasons set out in the report. Can I see all those in favour of recommendation B?
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the committee and the public for your patience. That's the end of the meeting, thank you.